That was having me. I don't see that she even saw it. My hands, you know, the shirt. We're having a late for my kids.
The same.
It's like. Why this is.
That's not you. Now we do not get it.
Hopefully it does. Yeah. Okay.
Although it's. I don't want.
Really generous. It has to be our time. All got it. I mean, you know, sure. All first now.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for all coming out and spending a little bit of your holiday season with us. We've been called this being to order on December 11th, 2024 at 6:30. Definitely, can we get the roll call then?
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gakin?
Here.
Hodgkin?
Here.
Lawrence?
There.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Perchini?
Here.
Fredo?
Here.
Cedar?
Here.
Swor?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Or?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And when the council president swore, you know, it would be. Oh, sorry. Want to have it myself. Please, religion.
I think. I have two reasons. We are fighting out of the United States of America. And to be public, which stands one nation under one. In this goal, we deliver to you and us as well.
Right, thank you. Okay. Now, we'll go to the council president's word.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Um, well, maybe you should hear what that is first. The first thing is under finance, request for council action. Um, the request from the lodging tax advisory committee. The finance committee has voted tonight not to bring this before council tonight, but rather to send the request back to LTAC committee to reconsider. Um, so we want to remove that from the agenda. Um, the second element of my request to approve, maybe we should act on these one by one.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so it's been motion to remove the LTAC portion of this tonight's agenda from the agenda.
And second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, that's all in favor. I oppose.
My next motion is under presentations. There's kind of two subsets on this. Uh, the first one is, because I know we kind of discussed this at prior meetings. I don't think we acted on it, is that I'd like to move that in the future, we limit presentations before the council with the time not to be more than 10 minutes per presentation and not more than three presentations per council meeting.
Go second.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Call in favor.
Hi.
Aye.
Here was.
Oh, yeah.
I was just, I would like to make a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Some of the presentations that we have are more in depth, like the Shaheila Space and Flood Authority that we have. They can't possibly cover those things in 10 minutes because. Uh, could we just maybe say limit the amount of presentations to two per meeting? Rather than put that time limit on there?
What if one of them is a half an hour to an hour long or something? I think we really need to respect the council's time and say, if, if there's a request for a presentation and it's going to be greater than, say, 10 minutes, um, that I would, then a request be submitted to council for us to vote on to accept that to bring it before the council.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fair.
Okay, thanks.
So is that what the motion is?
Yeah, to, to limit to no more than three and not more than 10 minutes per.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
And my final amendment for tonight's agenda. Um, under number five presentations, I move that we remove the presentation tonight on fluoride from Dr. Bill Ossmanson, uh, because he'll have an opportunity during the public hearing to speak, and he's already spoken on the issue before. And I think it's pretty clear from prior council votes, we know how this issue is going to go. So. That's my motion.
That's his motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes.
So when he got up here before, he had very limited time, and he has come a very long way. The council voted to have him come here to speak to us. So I'm going to be voting against this motion. I, I request to hear from him. I, we've heard from the health department a few times, so I would appreciate being able to hear what he has to say because I, I requested a couple of times to have him come speak to us.
Yeah, personal office.
Um, I would just offer that we've had months to look into all of the material we've been given, both, um, in writing and links to, um, YouTube's and other resources. And, um, and. I don't know, it's the best use of our time to, um, to have an extensive presentation at this point, um, when we've all been able to do our homework on this.
Thank you. Any more discussion? As councillor Zeta.
Um, I apologize to Dr. Ossmanson for even making the motion. I appreciate the fact that you've come a distance, I think it's from Issaquah, um, and be here tonight. However, um, I think it's made, made very clear how the council is likely to vote on this issue. Um, the last vote was seven to five to not continue fluoridating our water. I think everybody on this council has heard data and made up their minds already on how they want to proceed, and I don't see any reason why we need to spend more time on this issue tonight in a public presentation. Um, he, he would be allowed his three minutes in the public hearing.
Any other discussion? All, yes, councillors.
To be fair, you know, we've had the presentations for the fluoride. We haven't had any presentation against. Just to be fair, I think we should be able to hear him. I want to hear what he has to say.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
That's to remove.
That's to remove.
Oh, to remove.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor again. Uh, all opposed?
No.
No.
Confering the roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
No.
Gakin?
No.
Hodgkin?
No.
Lawrence?
No.
Mackey? Uh, here. Morrison?
No.
Perchini?
No.
Fredo?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Swor?
No.
Taylor?
No.
That fails three to eight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Um, now we'll just move on to presentations.
Can we approve the agenda as?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I mean, one more thing. Did you, did you discuss your word, why John, your piss, I like him.
We need to vote on approving the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
David?
Do we know John, not here?
I spoke with John today. He advised that you would be logging in online.
Okay.
Don't see him there.
To approve, actually, I should do.
Again.
Motion to excuse council member Mackey.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Thank you. But now we'll go on with presentation. Uh, so we have swearing in a student council representative. Scott.
Sure. Um, so, uh, the city council has chosen Adon Allen as the city council's first student council representative. Adon is currently a senior at Harbor Learning Center and has been a resident of Aberdeen for two years. When he first started at Harbor Learning Center, Adon was way behind on credits and not as motivated as he needed to be. Now he has completed so many classes that he is ahead in credits and will be graduating a little early, not to mention raising his GPA by a considerable amount. He is a kind and open person who works hard to achieve tangible results. As a student representative, Adon will attend scheduled workshops and regular council meetings twice a month to provide insight and feedback on issues affecting young people in Aberdeen. He will also collaborate with other council members to develop and support initiatives that benefit the community, serve as a liaison between Aberdeen High School students and city council, as well as observe how city government functions. Let's welcome Adon Allen to the Aberdeen City Council as Aberdeen's first student council representative. Deputy clerk is going to swear on and in.
All right. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I. State your name.
I, I do solemnly swear that I, Adon Allen.
Will support the constitution of the United States.
Will support this constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Washington.
And the constitution of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the position.
Perform and discharge the duties of the position.
Of the Aberdeen City Council Student Representative according to law.
Of the position of Aberdeen City Council Student Representative according to the law.
To the very best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations. And then we will have a seat for you at the table. We'll, at our January meeting, but you're welcome to sit up here tonight with your name placard, which is not in yet.
Thank you for joining.
Just want to thank you. Welcome to the group over here. Give your hand again.
Thanks, good for sharing. All right, thank you. Um, but next is Timberland library with Victoria Rivera.
Hello. I got my name changed when I got married two weeks ago, so it's Victoria Harmon now. Uh, and, um, I'm here tonight, uh, with Janice, um, the adult librarian to chat with you all about our library year of growth, connection and community. Slide. Okay. So a quick overview of our year. So, uh, about 40,654 items were checked out as of November. Uh, these stats are reviewing, um, January through November. Um, 1,213 new library card registrations. Um, as of November, we have 15,530 registered library card holders. Of the 15,000, only 5,275 are active users. Uh, we have had up to 17,060 internet sessions and, uh, 3,539 people have attended our programs. Uh, so next slide is, um, the circulation trends. So, um, our physical collection has steadily increased since the pandemic low of 2020. And next slide. Um, our digital circulation continues to be the popular choice with significant increase. So our, um, physical collection on average checkout is about 3,500. Um, as of January this year, the digital checkout reached 5,319. So that is the popular choice, and I think, um, that kind of falls in line with the holiday trend, people buying each other tablets and whatnot. So got to do something with those shiny new devices. Um, this next slide shows, um, our printing usage. So, uh, printing remains our most valuable service. As of November this year, we have printed 178,940 pages. We've upgraded our public printers as of December 3rd to improve efficiency and reliability. So if you come to our library and wonder, hmm, have these printers shrunk? It's because we've got two brand new ones. Um, also wanted to highlight our internet usage is on the rise. Uh, we've seen a significant increase in internet sessions this year. Our average session duration is approximately 38 minutes. Uh, so the next few slides are going to, um, highlight some of our programming. This first one is our math backpacks. Our math backpack program was purchased with, uh, Weatherwax Trust Funds, uh, special grants, uh, money for the Aberdeen community. Um, so we have partnered with local daycares and schools, um, and provided engaging math learning experiences for young children. So these backpacks are not in the collection. They're not seen. We are special delivering these backpacks to the daycares, the headstarts, the preschools, uh, our local, uh, schools so that the children can benefit. Um, the next slide is highlighting Library in the Park, and I made a little video. Our amazing Library in the Parks program has brought the community together with products, games and stuff. Fun. From makeup bowling to button making, it's worth having a blast. But guess what? We're not stopped there. For summer 2025, we're cooking up even more activities and performers. We're here to make memories and bring the library vibe right to the park. Special thanks to the Grace Harbor Foundation, Friends of the Library, YMCA, Aberdeen School District and Parks and Rec for your continued support and cooperation. See you next year. So again, for the last, uh, 14 years, we've partnered with the Aberdeen School System, Parks and Rec and YMCA. It's part of their lunch program during the summer. Um, and so we bring the, uh, activities to the park. Um, this summer, we have reached 1,000 children and their caregivers. Um, next year is our 15th anniversary for the program, and we're planning to do even more. Um, we are sunsetting our book checkout, and we are next year just going to give books away Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, uh, June through August. So look forward to that. Um, and also, um, a fun little tidbit, our most popular parks, uh, this summer was Finch and North End. Next slide. All right, the one that I have the most trouble pronouncing, thank you, Janice, for this one. Um, positively perfect reading has been a heartwarming success. Uh, children have had the opportunity to improve their reading skills while bonding with shelter animals. Uh, this program has not only benefited children, but also helped animals find loving homes. Um, we also like to mention that two of our young participants, um, who have been so inspired by the program that they have become volunteers for Paws, Paws of Grace Harbor. Um, so look forward to that. Um, we are continuing the program in January as well. Um, it's usually on Thursdays. Uh, the next slide, um, is our seniors creating art program. So, um, our partnership with West Haven Villas has brought joy to the seniors through art and creativity. We've helped seniors connect with each other and express themselves. This program has had a positive impact on their overall, um, overall wellbeing. Slide. Pints and Prose Literary Society. Can you guess who named that one? Thank you, Janice. Pints and Prose has fostered a love of reading in our community. If you guys don't know this program, um, it is at Steam Donkey Brewery Company. Um, and that little video clip you can play while I'm talking. It's basically, um, a book club at the brewery, and when you come in, you will probably see people silently reading books while sitting here. Um, this book club has provided a space for people to discuss their favorite books and connect with like-minded individuals. We're working to increase attendance and expand our programming. Um, so if you say you do not have time to read a book, come on down and just bring your book and drink some beer. Staff will not be drinking the beer, but everybody else can. Um, so this closing slide, um, we wanted to extend our sincere gratitude to the following individuals and organizations for their invaluable support of the Aberdeen Timberland Library. Uh, Mr. Eric Potts, Executive Director of the Grace Harbor Community Foundation. Thank you for your continued support, uh, and commitment to our Library in the Parks Program. Your generosity enriches our community and fosters a love of reading. The Aberdeen Friends of the Library, we are incredibly grateful for your dedication to our library programming initiatives. Your support, including the provision of materials, has been instrumental in creating engaging and inspiring experiences for our patrons. Aberdeen Downtown Revitalization Committee, Parks and Recreation, YMCA, Aberdeen School District and Cosmopolis School District, your collaborative spirit has been essential in creating enriching opportunities for our community. Together, we are building a stronger and more vibrant future. Public Works Department, Rick and Brett, you are awesome. Um, we appreciate your patience, so much patience and hard work in addressing our building maintenance needs. Uh, your efforts ensure a safe and comfortable library environment for all. Mayor Orr, Ruth Clemmons and the city council, thank you for the opportunity to share our vision and progress. Your support is crucial in shaping the future of our library. And to our beloved community, we are truly grateful for your ongoing support. We look forward to a fantastic 2025 filled with exciting programs and opportunities. Together, we are making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on getting married also. All right, so our next presentation is from the PUD.
Get on. All right, uh, Mayor Orr, council members, uh, City Administrator Clemmons and staff. Uh, my name is Ian Copeland, the Communications and Government Relations Director with the Grace Harbor Public Utility District, number one, and joined here today by our general manager, Skylar Burkhart. We wanted to take this opportunity to do something that we do every couple of years, which is, uh, come out and meet with our municipal partners, uh, other organizations like the port, uh, the county commission to just kind of keep you apprised of what the Grace Harbor PUD is dealing with, uh, with the services that we're providing and some of the high points, low points, some of the things that were, the challenges we're facing and some of the things that we're doing in the community. So that is why we are here today and really appreciate the opportunity, uh, to come and speak with you all. So just to, want to start off with just a little bit of, uh, general information about the utility. We operate under this 13-word, uh, mission statement to serve our community with high value utility services at the lowest practical cost. You'll notice that the word profit is not in there. We are a not-for-profit organization. Our rates are designed to cover the expenses of the services that we provide, and that's it. Um, we do have outside influences that can impact those costs, but we work as hard as we can to keep them down at the, the lowest level, uh, that, that we can practically do. Uh, we are currently in our 84th year of service to the, uh, Grace Harbor County, uh, serving just over 45,000 customers, uh, operating currently under a 1.115 million dollar budget. Uh, we're a pretty extensive system with over 1,700 miles of overhead and underground lines, uh, 36 substations, and we are also a telecommunications utility providing wholesale, a telecommunications service, uh, meaning we provide the infrastructure and work with internet service providers, which I will get to in a second. And, uh, we currently employ about 165, uh, full-time employees. Uh, represented publicly by our Board of Commissioners, uh, uh, serving the three, uh, districts, much like the county commission do, or the county commission does. Uh, Ari Callahan, uh, serves as the, uh, board president and also our district one representative out in East Grace Harbor County. Uh, former, uh, Aberdeen Deputy Police Chief Dave Timmons is our, uh, district two representative, uh, representing Aberdeen, uh, in the South Beach. And then, uh, John Martin, uh, represents, uh, North Grace Harbor County, uh, the North Beach area and the city of Cosmopolis and Hope Wyom. Uh, most recently, Commissioner Callahan was elected to, uh, serve out another six-year term, so he'll actually be, uh, sworn in at our, uh, next meeting, uh, to serve, uh, through into, uh, 2030. So, uh, just to recap some of the high points that we've had in 2024, uh, we received a clean audit on utility accountability and financial statements when it comes to a public entity. Trust in the utility is something that our customers need to have, and when you receive an audit, a report, uh, from the state on accountability and financial statements that shows that, that trust is, uh, well-placed. Uh, we also worked with, uh, the State Department of Commerce to distribute nearly 1.8 million dollars in clean energy credits, uh, for Washington families, uh, grants that went out, uh, $200 per, uh, customer for low and moderate income customers. Uh, we're able to do that, uh, through, uh, the months of September and August. And most recently, we received, uh, credit rating upgrades from S and P Global Ratings and Moody's Ratings. Uh, we were able to do a bond refund that saved, uh, in the area of $2 million, uh, to the utility. So very proud moment for us in that. Uh, we also continue to be very active in the community, uh, and very active, uh, with our partners in Washington DC, Olympia and, uh, city governments and county governments like you. As I mentioned, we are a telecommunications utility as well. We have been since 1998. Uh, we provide, uh, wholesale, uh, re, uh, telecommunications services, meaning that, again, we provide the infrastructure and work with nearly a dozen internet service providers for a rural county. A dozen ISPs is actually a pretty good number when you consider that there are a number of, uh, like-sized utilities that are struggling to find, uh, service providers. Uh, we have seen steady growth in that department, uh, coming in just under $800,000 in net revenue in the last year. Uh, we made 48 new connections and continue to grow where we can. Uh, most recently, we were awarded just under $7 million, uh, in a state broadband, uh, office grant for, uh, expansion down Highway 12 in East Grace Harbor County. And we're also partnering with NOAA Nets, uh, for a valley expansion project that would, uh, bring service to underserved and unserved areas in the Wishkaw Anuchi, uh, and sets of river valleys. Uh, our system continues to hold up really well to the rigors of being on the Washington coast, as we saw just over the last few weeks. Uh, we are, uh, subject to a number of, uh, pretty impressive storms that can come ashore. Uh, our, uh, utility crews are, in my opinion, uh, the best in the business. Uh, they're working, uh, five days a week, uh, at eight to four thirty to work and on strengthening the system. And then when there's a power outage, they head out, uh, to get the power back on as quickly and safely as they can. Uh, in the last year, in 2023, that is, uh, we replaced 659 poles, uh, continued substation work at Highland Sub, uh, near Cosmopolis, uh, the Central Park Sub and the Electric Park, uh, substation, uh, behind the utility headquarters on Sumner. Uh, we continue to focus on vegetation management. We're called the Evergreen State for a reason. Lots of trees out there, they can cause a problem for even the best utility if you don't keep it, uh, regularly trimmed. So we work with both, uh, local crews and, uh, utility crews and, uh, contract crews to make sure that problem trees are kept trimmed back and that vegetation in and around the system is kept under control. Uh, and our crews were also able to install, uh, 280,000 feet of new, uh, power lines, uh, over the last year. Um, our 2023 numbers were really, uh, really something. Actually, uh, they were made even more impressive by the fact that 2022 was a pretty bad year, uh, for, uh, reliability and that we had a number of very high-profile and large-scale outages, uh, some caused by storms, ice storms, and another, uh, number of them caused by a rash of car versus pole collisions, in which the cars just happened to hit what we call very busy poles that are kind of critical to the system. Uh, but our numbers in 2023, uh, the outages were, uh, down, uh, from, we had 278 outages, uh, uh, in, uh, 2022. It went down to 20, to 230 in the last year. Our total, uh, customer hours without power, uh, were down, uh, tree-related outages were down, and equipment failures were down. So we saw really great growth in those areas where we, our system really did, uh, rebound from a tough 2022 and had a, a very good year in 2023. The main area that, uh, that I find myself working with as the government relations director is, uh, working, uh, with our, uh, power manager on the, or power director on the, uh, energy supply that provides our, uh, service. We are operating under a number of state mandates to, uh, offer emission-free energy. Uh, we currently have an energy portfolio that is nine, nearly 90% emission-free, uh, the vast majority of that coming from the federal Columbia. Uh, the vast majority of that coming from the federal Columbia River Power System, the hydroelectric dams on the Columbia and the Snake Rivers. Uh, we continue to advocate for a reliable energy system, and we believe that the uh hydroelectric system is the backbone of that system and will continue to be, needs to continue to be, uh, at least until something that is equally reliable and affordable can be brought online. Maybe we will get there someday. We are not there yet, and so we continue to uh advocate for that system, uh, even in the face of uh efforts to remove some of those uh, some of those dams before those uh reliable and affordable replacements are found. So as we move into our eighty-fifth year of service, uh, the Commissioners have just approved a one hundred and twenty-one million dollar budget. It unfortunately did include a three percent rate increase, but it was the first time that we have had to increase rates uh in four out of the last five years, something that we were very proud of, uh, increased power costs from the Bonneville Power Administration are the main driver in that. Uh, again, we work with Bonneville to try to keep those rates as low as is practically possible, but the cost of doing service is going up, and that is reflected in uh the decision to uh to raise rates. But uh we continue to operate a very tight ship financially, uh, currently operating under a, or will be operating under a twelve million dollar capital budget to continue to operate our system and maintain our system. Uh, last year also saw the uh first year in which we became a load-following uh Bonneville Power Administration customer, meaning that we purchased from Bonneville enough energy to serve our needs. Uh, we do not, we no longer go out on the market and sell excess power. That creates a lot more stability in our budgets, a lot more predictability in our budgets, and uh allows us to not be as exposed to volatile power markets. And we continue to work with our legislative partners in Washington DC and in Olympia to uh again, tell the story of public power, the service that it's provided for over eighty years uh in Grace Harbor and around Washington State, and again, the need to maintain it and maintain the system that provides some of the lowest uh cost energy in the state or in the country, excuse me, and also some of the most reliable energy that uh is the envy of just about every other utility uh in the country. Cool. All right, that is, uh, as I said, we have uh been uh your utility for eighty-four years. We're headed into our eighty-fifth. Uh, look forward to doing that and would like to offer Skylar the chance to come up and say uh something? And then if you have any questions, we'd be happy to hear them.
Thank you, Ian. Again, I'm Skylar Burkhart, the General Manager. Thank you for attention tonight, and if you do have any questions for us, please, I don't want to say, thanks for caring. Thank you for uh, we're happy to be your, our partners. So any questions about power or telecommunications, please reach out to the PUD. Uh, we do have a partnership. I want to thank Rick Sanger for a, a safety improvement over by the PUD on the, on the, on the streets of Aberdeen. That was very helpful for us. And again, we're your partners. We want to help you with anything having to do with the utility, so reach out with any questions anytime. So. Anything tonight or?
Does Bonneville have a policy around prioritizing electrical use to existing customers or or cities and current industry such that um, the competition that's coming from blockchain and data processing mega plants won't take away power or start to drive up our rates?
That's a great question, and I don't think they do. Um, Bonneville is a federal provider and they only sell to utilities. So an individual customer wouldn't be able to go directly to Bonneville and get a service. It would have to come through a local provider. Um, so a lot of those decisions we made more at a local level, but we're very aware of that. And um, we have a certain amount of headroom in our contract right now, and we'll have a different contract in a few years. So we're very sensitive to that issue. We do want growth, but it needs to be the right kind of growth and and not drastic. It needs to be a little more organic. But yeah, very aware of that issue. I don't think there's a policy at the federal level. I know that the public is uh preferred, like there's a, there's a term called preference power within Bonneville where the public is entitled to that power from the federal river system that Ian talked about. But I'm not aware of that finer point about exactly who gets it other than the public. Thank you for asking.
Okay, now the person Theodore? I have one question, but I really, this is to be considered offline, so I'd like to call you or Ian maybe the next day or two
Sure.
Um, at your offices if it's convenient.
Yeah, all of our Commissioner and uh senior leaders are on our website. If you go to G H P U D dot org, you can find any of us. Yeah, anytime.
The other hand's up, but I'm not seeing them physically up. I don't know who seat eighteen is. No? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
My microphone's wrong. All right, um, thank you, uh, wow, you're quick.
You wanted me to be quick, I'll be quick. I'm Dr. Bill Osmondson. I have a master's in public health. For twenty-five years, I promoted water fluoridation. And there are several things that changed my mind. Fluoridation, the FDA says do not swallow fluoride. The court says it's an unreasonable risk. The EPA Union says it's a criminal act. The fluoride, Florida Surgeon General says that it's a public health malpractice. It's a legend drug according to the Washington State Board of Pharmacy. The National Toxicology Program, when they reported in twenty twenty that it was eighteen out of nineteen high-quality human studies showing lower IQ intelligence. Since then, up until twenty twenty-three, there were twelve more human studies. Twelve of twelve, high-quality, showing lower IQ. The second part of the National Toxicology Program report will be published soon. Next. The city of Aberdeen is scientifically and legally and ethically correct. Next. One of the things that I think this, uh, the council needs to consider is that just because you say no to fluoridation does not mean that you've solved the problem of rampant decay. It is a problem. I had to treat it. I took kids to the hospital. It's grim. It's not fun, especially for children, because they don't understand what's happening. So the guidance that I would recommend for the fetus is girls and women wanting to become pregnant someday should avoid drinking water with greater than oh point two part per million of fluoride. That's the benchmark dose analysis. Fluoridation is at oh point seven. And they should not swallow fluoride toothpaste. Why? For twenty years prior to getting pregnant, they should not drink fluoridated water. Why? Well, the fetus, I use the term, sucks out calcium out of the mother's bones. And and to get that calcium out, the bones resorb. When the bones resorb, the fluoride, which has been stored in the bones, is released into the bloodstream. That goes to the fetus. The placenta does not block the fluoride to the fetus. It goes right on through. Fluoride affects our reproductive organs? We should be talking about low sugar, good oral hygiene, maybe taxing with a sin tax. Next. Guidance for infants. Infants thrive best on mother's milk. A mother's body biologically blocks virtually all fluoride, protecting babies naturally. A second-best option is formula made with water containing less than oh point oh one part per million of fluoride. That's pretty much bottled water. Mother's milk has a mean concentration of point oh oh four, even less than that. No fluoride toothpaste for infants. Do not put an infant to bed with a bottle of juice, milk, or soda, et cetera. The picture at the bottom is the uh ECC. Low sugar. Good oral hygiene is important for the babies. Next. Guidance for children and youth. Avoid drinking water with more than oh point two part per million of fluoride. Swallowing is a reflex. My daughter, at eleven years of age, I stuck my head into the bathroom when it was late one night after a concert, and and I said, Christie, don't swallow that toothpaste. She was a kind of a diva. Anyway. She said, I don't swallow my toothpaste. And so I watched. She leaned over the sink and I watched her throat, and before she spit, there went okay, little Eve's apple popped up and down because it's a reflex. She swallowed. We had to practice it. That's eleven years of age. My grandson, at five years of age, I'm trying to get him to not swallow the candy, I mean toothpaste. And he likes it. He loves it, okay? Avoid fluoride toothpaste prior to competency in spitting and rinsing and spitting and rinsing once again, okay? Follow the toothpaste label. Next. Yeah, for adults, do not swallow fluoride toothpaste. Avoid drinking water containing more than oh point two part per million fluoride. Some foods are high in fluoride and should be limited. Again, we should be emphasizing a low-sugar diet and good oral hygiene. Next. Poverty and sugar are more powerful than swallowing any types of fluoride, and we'll show this in just a bit. Next. Freedom and science changed my mind. Next. The, the product that you're adding to the water contains lots of contaminants. And these contaminants do increase in people's blood and urine. Thank you. Next. Number one, Food and Drug Administration. Next. Do not swallow? For efficacy, it's unknown. Next. There's no substantial evidence of drug effectiveness according to the FDA. Next. One of the first things I did was I took my toothpaste label and I said, okay, it's a drug. Yes, of course. Next. And do not swallow. Next. And use a pea-size amount. This was the time, you know, when there was like a Dairy Queen ice cream cone on the toothbrush. It was all just huge amounts. Next. Keep out of reach of children under six years of age. Next. And it said, how much was a pea-size amount? Pea-size. How much fluoride is in there? What's the dosage that they're talking about? Well, a quarter milligram, the same as a glass of fluoridated water that you're giving people, and we should be drinking more than one glass a day. Next. Now, part of the problem that we have in dentistry is the research that we have so far is all observational data. And in school, they told us a simple thing of, you know, just because you see two things happen doesn't mean they're related. For example, there's more people that drown during the summer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. More people eat watermelon during the summer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you can't tie those two things together. They're not related. They, they do happen, but they're not related. So just because we have fewer cavities here where there is fluoridation doesn't mean it was fluoridation that reduced the decay. In order to get FDA approval, you need to go on up above, let's see, above here, above this red line to non-randomized control trials. FDA requires randomized control trials and systematic reviews. We don't have any. There's one randomized control trial and it had no benefit. Next. Without quality research, claims of benefit or lack of benefit, an increased or decreased dental carries after cessation of fluoridation are suspect. Next. Number of recent cessation studies showed that stopping fluoridation does literally nothing to increase overall dental decay. Next. Next. Next, District Court, okay, and sworn deposition. Recently, this is September that the judge came out with it. In depositions for this court hearing, we deposed the National Sanitation Foundation, the Food and Drug Administration, the CDC, the EPA, and three major fluoride manufacturers. They did not have one single study on the safety of fluoride ingestion. Not one, okay? Back, yeah, there you go. Fluoridation, the court said, is an unreasonable risk. That's the level that the TASCAS law says the judge needed to determine, okay? But the judge went on from that and said plaintiffs have proven by a preponderance of the evidence that water fluoridation at the level of point seven is an unreasonable risk. Next. The pool benchmark dose analysis, that means where do we think based on the science that it's safe? Shows a one-point drop in IQ of a child is to be expected for each roughly quarter-milligram per liter of fluoride in a pregnant mother's urine. Now, how does urine fluoride concentration and water fluoridation concentration compare? On an individual basis, you don't do it, okay? But on a population basis, about half the fluoride comes from water, about half the fluoride comes from other sources, and about half the fluoride is stays in the bone and half is excreted. So they are comparable, okay? Um, so we're looking at about almost three to almost seven IQ point loss. Next. Why is IQ important? I mean, I'd pay a lot of money for more brains because, ah, sure, okay, that's important to me. But if we look at this graph here, we can see that, that when we have six million and this graph's use of mentally challenged, lower than seventy-five IQ and about six million at, at uh IQ, I think it's one twenty-five, one thirty-five, somewhere in there. When we skew this whole bell curve down for everybody in the population, we end up with about fifty percent more mentally retarded or lower IQ and about half the number of gifted. It's a huge factor. We end up with increased dropouts. Every, every district has that problem. Increased unemployment, increased incarceration. These are all huge expenses, but we also reduce on our gifted. Next. Researchers remain consistent. Now they're looking at eight point eight IQ decrement for performance IQ, okay? They're getting more detailed as we do more research. Next. The National Toxicology Program measured lower IQ. Next. Environmental Protection Agency. Next. And I've already read this to you, know about this. Next. Now, this is really important to me because I'm only talking from a dental standpoint about tooth, and I made a lot of money on teeth from fluoride damage. But there's other risks. When I first nominated fluoride to the National Toxicology Program, I did bone cancer because to me, the bone cancer is really strong. And then I did thyroid reduction because diabetes is going up. We have a serious problem with diabetes, and then also obesity is going on up. Next. You're, you're good. You're doing great. Number five, it's not cost-effective. And I wrote a study on this. I think I've sent it to you. Next. Next. We're looking at about five hundred and fifty-six dollars per person per year loss from fluoridation. Here's some, happened in a picture of a, a young man, and he had fluoridated water when he was growing up uh to make formula. Next. Next. That's what we'd like to see. And she was on mother's milk. Next. Another problem we have in teeth is the teeth become more brittle, harder. There's no question. Next. And so it's harder to see the decay. Next. And when we clean out the decay, next, we see that there's what we call a fluoride bomb inside. The tooth bombs out. It's hard to diagnose. Next. And of complete cus fractures. Next. Next. Uh, fluoride lacks significant benefit. Next. Um, and and I've shown you these before. The ingestion of fluoride is not likely reduce tooth decay as nineteen ninety-nine by the Center for Disease Control, Center for Disease Control. It is not CDC's task to determine what levels of fluoride in water are safe. You know, now you're, we're looking at the wrong people if we look at CDC. Next. And this is what really aches my heart, but if you look at these pictures, notice how the bottom teeth are okay, but not the top teeth. Um, that's because the baby went to bed with a bottle and that the juices went over the top teeth, but not so much from the bottom. Next. Next. Okay, this is really important to understand. When we look at countries of the world, regardless of whether they fluoridate or not and compare them all, they've all reduced decay to similar low levels. Next. Here's another one, same thing, World Health Organization. When we look over a long period of time, we're all down at about the same. We can't see benefit from fluoridation. Next. This one, I think, is the most important one to me is because what happened here before we had fluoridation? Look at the decay drop before fluoridation. Yes, we had fluoridation to start there. And what's happened? We start looking now. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Decay is dropping. So therefore fluoridation's working, right? Of course, we have two events. Decay going down, fluoridation increasing, must have, hang on a sec. That doesn't mean that they're related. And and it's very important because we have toothpaste coming in here and many other things. But what happened here, not a single study has shown what caused that back then. Okay, next. I'm getting there, guys. Um, huge increase in dental frosts. Next. Can't, don't have time for this. Next. Can't, don't have time for this, next. More and more kids are getting more done. Here's another one, increase in dental fluoresces, but not decrease in tooth decay of very much at all, next. Most developed countries have freedom. Now look at this, all these countries are saying no. Israel suspended it, Hungary, Norway, Sweden, all of these different countries stopped it. Port Angeles fought hard, wanted to dissolve their whole city because they would, the city wanted to fluoridate. And the doctors said, yes, we're having too many kids coming to the hospital for surgery, we must have fluoridation. Well, guess what? After they stopped fluoridation, no, after they started fluoridation, it actually went up on the decay rate and the hospitalization rate. Thank you very much, any questions?
The patient is called Washington Action for Safe Water.
Yes.
But it seems like your sole focus is on fluoride and that you've been advocating for fluoride removal for at least ten years at within Washington State at the federal level and in other states where fluoride has been part of their water system. The, the diligence and persistence of your, of your endeavors is to be commended.
Thank you.
I, I disagree with your science and I stand with our local dentist and Department of Health recommendations. But um, if, if Washington Action for Safe Water is truly there to look out for our well-being, will you also be looking into microplastics, which are in every organ and tissue in the body? Um, PFAS and, and other pesticides which are in community water systems?
Absolutely. Remember about half the water that is consumed according to the EPA is bottled water. That's where we're getting our microplastics from, that's where a lot of people don't want to drink fluoridated water. So they buy the bottled water. If we can just get our water, Rick, all he needs to do is turn off that pump. That's how you solve fluoridation, just turn off the pump. And then we can encourage people to drink the tap water, which is good water, but it needs to have the microplastics. And the PFAS is a real concern. What does PFAS stand for? It's a fluoridated carbon, okay? Does it break down? Oh, it's a forever chemical, not exactly forever, it does break down. And what does it give you? Fluoride. Okay, we're getting many sources of fluoride, so you are absolutely spot on, okay? We need to be working with our water and many things, but the fluoridation is very, very clear. Thirty out of thirty-one human studies, high quality studies saying lower IQ to the brain and to me, the brain is more important to the teeth, I can fix teeth, I can't fix brains. Is that an answer?
It does, thank you for your answer and I know that there's conflicting science.
Oh, yes. But remember, look for quality.
Yes.
Not just observational studies, look for randomized control trials. And there's not a single one randomized control that shows efficacy or safety. And that's one of the problems, because if you're gonna look at efficacy, you need a randomized controlled trial. And at that point, then you can start looking at the risks. When you're looking observational, you don't see the risks.
We could talk all night about the science, but I'll yield some of my seatmates.
I'm just wondering if there's been any studies done in countries that have not fluoridated, possibly like Africa or India and their dental health in those countries?
I showed you graphs of Europe, I showed you all the countries of Europe. They don't fluoridate.
Yeah, but I'm wondering about countries that have never fluoridated, like Africa, India, you know, how, how is their dental health?
Or Europe. Most of Europe has never fluoridated. Okay?
And their dental health is better than the United States?
No, I don't think they're better, they pay a lot less. They're very similar on a public health basis, they're similar, okay? They weren't similar, right after World War Two, there was lots of poverty and, and, and that's one of the problems. If, if we compare the rich and the poor, we have a real problem. But as the socioeconomics of Europe has gone up, the decay rate has gone down. As our socioeconomics improved, decay went down.
Now, was UK on that list of European countries that do not fluoridate?
Well, parts of UK don't and parts of it do, okay?
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Austin said, I wanna thank you very much for your time and your presentation. And I apologize for wanting to possibly remove you, I think that was a very good presentation and it has affected my decision on how I'll vote for this tonight.
Thank you, Stan.
I, I had one question though, so the whole fluoride question arrived on our stage because a councilperson has autism.
I wasn't even one of the, the started.
So I just wanted to know, is there any connection between autism or that you know?
Autism is a tough one, okay? There is one study, twenty twenty-four, that looked at other risks. I mean, there's more ways of measuring the brain problems such as, as miscarriage, which I see increases, but it's not strong science. Um, I, I look at premature infant mortality, okay? Also increases when you look at fluoridated communities compared to non-fluoridated communities. Again, it's just preliminary research. There is one, twenty twenty-four, that shows they found an increase in autism. But, but remember, that's just one study, we don't change our minds on one study. Thirty out of thirty-one, that's pretty powerful, human studies, but one study? Watch, because more research, we don't have enough.
Were any of those studies?
Yes.
High quality studies.
Um, most of them, no, okay? But there was one, yes, that I know of, maybe there's more, but there's one, no. But no, why? Why are we not doing studies on the brain in the United States? What's the problem? Or it's because my meditation lobby is so strong promoting it that researchers have been nailed if they do, so we've looked to other countries. But they're starting to do more in the United States, funded by the United States, but, but not done here in the United States. We just don't wanna look at our problems, it's embarrassing. I, I'm seriously embarrassing, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's personal force.
I just, I don't have any questions, just comment, I just wanted to thank you for coming down here all that way yet again. It's a very good presentation. Um, secondly, I don't wanna start a big argument if that comment was completely inappropriate. That isn't the premise of how this discussion arrived and that was just completely inappropriate.
Thank you.
Last.
Casey, I, I didn't take offense in any.
Um, lastly, um, the slide deck, I would love to get a copy of that so that I could actually take a more deep dive into that because it works really fast, so, thank you very much.
She can give you a copy of that. And you need to thank my wife, she's the one that came with me, so it's a fun hot date to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. Your idea of a fun day.
Yeah.
All right, now we'll move on to public comments and uh, start with your name and your address or word if you could please send.
And reminder that we have a public hearing on fluoride, so if your comment is in reference to that, save it for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Please go. Hello, Steve Haywood, I am no longer a citizen of Aberdeen. I moved, I live in McCleary now. So, um, they better watch out. Anyway, you know, raising taxes, that's easy. I hear somebody say, boy, that's really tough. No, it's really tough to uh, deal with that table over there, okay? Fourteen years ago, I moved Aberdeen. Couple of months after I moved, the grass was growing in the sidewalk, I decided to kill it. I didn't use Roundup, I used Vinegar, don't like Roundup. Had, I believe it was, Public Works came up. I said, there's a big hole there, I need some concrete, fill it in. I had a cone for about three weeks, but the guy told me, he goes, yeah, there's a hole there because you killed the grass. That was fourteen years ago, that hole still exists, well, there's concrete over it right now. I filled some of it in, they did some of it, but the sidewalks are terrible, fourteen years now. I noticed that code enforcement guy retired, they all didn't really know him, the new code enforcement guy took over. Wow, what a wonder he is doing. Maybe you should look at the other directors and see, switch them up a little bit, maybe you can get more, um, more going. And you're saying that the council kicked the can down the, the road, I, I don't think it was just the council that kicked the can down the road. Um, and uh, I have Sam Ben's Last Will and Testament and I really wanna give it to a museum, but I don't know if I wanna give it to Aberdeen Museum until they get straightened out. So, once they get straightened out, maybe I'll, I'll bring that Last Will and Testament back to Aberdeen. But uh, this town can be great, it was sixteen years ago. Then I bought that house and it's been declining ever since, not the house, the, the city. But I, I, I hope that the new owner enjoys the house and I hope the neighbors enjoy the new owner. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone, Janice Robbie, uh, adult librarian at the Aberdeen Timberland Library. Uh, just wanted to mention Pints and Prose Literary Society, yes, one of the many programs that I created with a ridiculous name. Um, but our first meeting of the winter quarter is actually next Wednesday um, at six thirty and we are reading cozies, if anyone likes cozies. Our main book is called The Golden Spoon, it's basically, um, think Great British Bake Off with murder, so, thank you.
There anybody else for public comment? Yes.
Hello, my name is Deanne Shaw and I live in the sixth ward. And I came tonight to take a Don's picture. And then when I saw that fluoride was on the agenda, I was reminded that I wasn't able to attend the public hearing a couple of months ago. So I dug out my notes that I was gonna say then and I'm gonna share my thoughts, even though it sounds like it's pretty clear everybody's minds are made up, but I'm here and I'm not, I'm not able to say for the public hearing because I was only gonna come for Don's picture and I've already had to text some people about why I'm late, but. So, anyway, I'm sixty-three years old, I still have all my cognitive abilities, I think, I'm not drooling yet. And um, I, um, when I grew up, my parents couldn't afford healthcare, but I still have all my teeth. And I didn't see a dentist until I was in the sixth grade. Um, my son grew up in Aberdeen, he's fluoridated water, he graduated from college summa cum laude and was invited to play his cello at Carnegie Hall, so, which, you know, you, it's kind of what, what, what's, which is the cause, you know? So um, I always wanted to be one of those kids who got to miss school to see the dentist. But my mom assured me that I was gonna be okay and if anything was really wrong, that she would take care of it. Today I have healthcare and I see my dentist regularly, but we live in a community where that is not the case for the vast majority of our children. Fluoride occurs naturally, I'm sure you know, in eight counties in our state. It occurs naturally at the desired level that healthcare officials recommend for um, ma- maximum optimal um, health benefits. So the fluoride that's being added to Aberdeen's water in my mind is more like a supplement to achieve a desired effect that people in eight other counties in our state are getting, getting naturally. Um, and you have to go pretty far down the rabbit hole to find the scientific studies that question fluoride. Um, some of them were done in China and Iran and the UK. And these are scientists who happily announce their findings, but so far have declined to show their work. So I think in school, when you don't wanna show your work, you get an F. Um, and that's compared to the decades of research that dates back to Harry Truman in the nineteen forties after the war, when they were turning away twenty percent of young men trying to get into the military because of their dental health issues. And he was the first big champion in our country of fluoridating the water because of studies done during the war on fluoride. So um, and that the, the report said the city will save some money, but the city may save some money, but I can't help but think of the healthcare and dental costs that will increase as a result for our families. Money that they don't have, poverty is all around us, we're not one of those communities where we're seeing socio-economic benefits. As adults, if we don't want fluoride, we have choices. We can filter fluoride out of our water, but our kids don't have that luxury.
Yeah.
I think. Thank you, and I hope that you vote in favor of the health and well-being of our children tonight.
Thank you. Any other public comments? And then we'll move on to the consent agenda with councilperson's form.
Motion to, motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the November twenty-sixth meeting, accounts payable and payroll.
Second, is there any discussion? And then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or passes? I already think I, the long mayor's report, I apologize right off the bat. I've been not read it, but I'm just gonna do the highlights. Yeah. Let it be in three minutes. I just wanted to point out twelve things that I, besides the dog parade that's going on, Plaza's putting on Saturday and the bike parade that the Boats would put on next Saturday, downtown Aberdeen. Um, so the first year that I've been the mayor in this wonderful city, it's been really a roller coaster, but I do think a lot got done and, and a lot of stuff is still in the works, so I, I feel it was a really good year. Uh, we opened up the Fried Creek Pump Station, uh, which was a really key part of our city's infrastructure for uh, future flooding, uh, to stop future flooding. We narrowed down a path through public meetings and interaction with the public to uh, to deal with the Young Street Bridge project and didn't go the way I wanted, but it's a, we're gonna say a part of it. We removed the homeless uh, village which had gotten completely out of hand downtown and I really appreciate everybody's efforts on helping us get that done. There were over two hundred people out there that were, that we, um, I guess we displaced, most of them moved on. Some of them went to their actual homes that they had. And then while we did that, we also opened up a lot of communication with uh, healthcare partners. And there, and so we actually can see that there is a lot of actual work being done right now to help our homeless and addicted folks. We're finalized our RV and parking issues with people camping in their tents. And this year, starting in January, we'll be able to take action against those people and clean our streets up and, and then show that wonderful step forward. Uh, just dealing with the homeless camp in itself saves the city about twenty thousand dollars a month in cleaning fees and maintenance. Really happy for that, plus it leaves our, our, our first responders open to deal with real businesses. I mean, not that are, homeless aren't real issues, but there's a lot of other issues that our police have to be drawn away from and are fired at providing services. Let's see, we hosted the state Little League tournament here, we haven't done that in years and there were comments from that folks that visited, uh, that were really impressed with the field and I, with our baseball facilities. I, I can see that happening again, so I was really happy for the Parks Department for doing that for our community. We've gotten further on our museum project than we have in the last six years since the fire. We actually are starting to work on the building, so within a year, so we should have a visitor center slash museum in downtown Aberdeen again. That's a great. that's a great pick for our community. A great place to put that, um, will and testament someday. Uh, let's see, the we've also, uh, we have work going on right now, planning on, uh, for our, uh, library. Our historic library is gonna be, uh, updated and remodeled. There is money for that that, well, it comes out of a special library fund, so it doesn't really affect our city budget. Um, we're, let's see, uh, oh, for the first time in quite a few years, our city is gonna be working from a balanced budget to start the year off and, and that's been a long time coming and I, I'm sad that it had to have, uh, rate increases as part of that, but, uh, unfortunately have fallen behind many cities in, in our taxing and, and, um, we've set our system up for the lowest and people who can't pay instead of working separately with them to help them if they have issues paying rather than setting the, the system up for everybody. This is what we should be doing. Uh, let's see, uh, there's a lot more. Let's see. Oh, uh, we got through a really scary IT breach that, uh, could have been devastating for our city. And, uh, through that process, we have not only fixed the problem, but we've also, uh, implemented new, um, practices that will make us a lot safer and less likely to be, have this type of intrusion in the future. And then, um, let's see. Oh, yeah. So, I know we were just talking about sidewalks. Uh, we, this year we did replace, uh, five of over a thousand linear feet of sidewalks and we plan on doing that the same year. And we're gonna continue this as long as I'm here. And, uh, until we get most of the major, we can't replace all the sidewalks in the city. Uh, but we can replace the really bad ones and we can also work on adding some in places where, uh, safety of our students is really important and our kids. So we need to have more, more sidewalks. So that's all in the plan. That was number ten. Okay, so let's see, uh, um, eleven. So we've installed radar signs all around our city that kind of slow people down when they're speeding. And, um, I found myself kind of into town at forty-five or fifty and then that sign reminds me that I'm going way over the speed, trying to slow down. So thanks for installing those. We've also installed six, uh, block cameras. And, uh, through that, we found in the last, it took a few weeks, we had over a hundred and fifty thousand cars go through. Uh, we also identified several stolen vehicles and helped find a missing person by the, installing those cameras. So that's wonderful. We're gonna, we're gonna add two more next year. Uh, you can't drive a stolen car really into Aberdeen without a C N N and you can't get away without a C N N. So, so stop stealing cars. Okay, then the last, the last, and I think the greatest thing that's happened to our city in this last year was that uh, we secured, uh, a new owner for the South Shore Mall. And, uh, Pinnacle is the, is the owner. They're gonna be constructing modular homes. Uh, metal modular homes. It can be stacked and they're gonna, um, hire over three hundred permanent, uh, full-time good wage salary jobs. So, and then that's a, I just think that's a wonderful thing. It's gonna help us in a ton of ways. Um, they're also gonna help us, I think, increase our ports activity, maybe across the, I mean, they sell these um, uh, to foreign countries, Canada or other states are gonna have to load them onto ships. So I think I'm hoping we get some port activity out of that. So I think, uh, twenty twenty-four has been a wonderful year and I thank all of you council people for working as hard as you've all done to, to help us have progress in our city. And I can't wait to see what we do next year. So, thank you and, uh, happy holidays to everybody out there. All right. That's my comments. And so now, uh, council reports. Do you have any? Councilperson, or Jenny?
Okay, um, the homeless response committee met on the third. And, um, City Administrator Clemens gave an update on the RV parking program. The ordinance was passed by the city council and is effective January first, twenty twenty-five. The city will begin enforcing this on January second. The staff has been busy getting the program put together to begin enforcement. Currently, for those that are eligible and meet the requirements of staying in the parking lot overnight, the hours will be from seven at night to seven in the morning. There will be a Santa Can onsite that will be open during those hours and will be locked in the off hours. Um, the city is no longer pursuing funding for a shelter. The committee will look at ways to help support the county in their endeavors. Um, because the county has their, um, homeless committee as well. And so working together will help both of us. Um, we will continue to support the county in their pursuit of mental health and addiction services. And for youth homelessness, there are six beds for the youth shelter. This area continues to be really hard to fund because of the requirements centered around staffing for children. Um, the committee discussed housing and the continued need for housing. Affordable housing is the biggest need in our community. The multiple family housing tax credits are available to builders in Graves Harbor County. And the staff continues to work with developers on building new housing. Charlie Capoman, the executive director of the Union Gospel Mission, joined our group for the first time and talked about one impacts the camp closure has had on the mission and about future needs. Currently, there are between twenty to twenty-three men staying at the mission with another ten at the Friendship House, which is for women. They had sixty-seven guests for Thanksgiving dinner. Um, City Administrator Clemens and has discussed doing another survey to the business community and the regular community. And the committee agreed and agreed to target March for the survey. This will provide staff time to begin enforcement of the RV parking. And we'll be able to compare, um, our survey from last year to the new year to see if anything's improved, if anything's gotten worse. It'll give us an idea of where we need to change, what we need to change, um, what we can do better and what we're, what, what is working. Um, we need to thank Commissioner Pine. Um, since he will no longer be the commissioner, but he helped us a lot. Um, and did a lot of work for the committee. Um, and remember Jamie Judkins resigned her position. And so we're looking to fill the vacancy on the committee. We will be meeting again January seventh, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM at the Aberdeen Police Department. And we agreed to move these meetings to quarterly since we don't have the camp under the bridge. We don't need to meet quite as often, but we will be available for monthly meetings if the need arises. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any councillors wishing to make a report? Uh, Councilperson Ellis?
Thank you. Um, yesterday I attended the A W C listening session on new transportation funding ideas. Um, the legislature will be, well, they're looking for ways to replace the gas tax as, um, gas and hybrid vehicles become more efficient. Um, the, the revenues are going down and then add to that the electric vehicles. Um, so they did a pilot with a road usage charge um, so that drivers would pay by the mile. And, um, and this wouldn't take place till probably another two years or so, because there are a lot of details that still need to be worked out. But the most popular method for how you account for your miles is taking a picture of your odometer and sending that in. Um, like when you renew your vehicle tags. Um, they realize that people don't want to be tracked and they don't want GPS things that monitor where we've been. And I share that as well. Um, their findings that were pretty interesting in that by switching from the gas tax of two and a half cents a mile, um, most vehicles end up saving money paying a road usage charge. And, um, so that was all very interesting and we'll be hearing more about that as the legislature picks us up and, um, fine tunes how the program will work. If anyone has particular questions, I'd be delighted to talk more with you. But I'll leave it at that for the time.
Thank you. Any other council? And then, and we'll move on to, uh, staff reports and Administrator Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I submitted a report to all of you. Um, you should have that before you or in front of you. Um, I, last week I attended the Economic Development Expo. Um, in my report, I explain, um, some of the, um, summaries that we received on economics for the future for, um, Grace Harbor and the four other counties, um, around us and the issues that we're all facing. Um, it seems like housing, um, healthcare providers, um, and, uh, ecosystems to support industries. That's like tool providers, you know, equipment providers, material and expertise providers. Those are the things that, um, a lot of our rural communities are challenged with addressing and will be challenged with addressing in the future. So pretty interesting stuff. Happy to discuss anything further with you. I also attended the same meeting as Councilmember Ellis on the fuel tax impact. That is something that will be happening over the course of ten years. We have ten years kind of sort that out with the introduction of electric vehicles and more fuel-efficient vehicles and the, the deadline of twenty thirty-five. Um, Washington State will have to figure out ways to, um, fund their roads and the maintenance of their roads. Um, I give some numbers in there as well for you to look at if you want to learn more information. I also give the website um, so that you can kind of track what is being done and what is being, and all of this is being led legislatively. So your legislature, your legislators at the state level are the ones that are asking for this information. And so, um, they've been tasked with providing this information. There are some states that are already doing this. And the reason why I'm bringing this up and why it's important to rural communities like ours, because a trip to Costco is an hour away in comparison to someone who already lives in Olympia and Lacey. So we might feel the crunch of this. We might feel the pain of this a lot more. Rural communities might feel it a lot more. So that may, there may be a legislative agenda there for us to pursue in the future. Um, so just, you know, if you have any questions about my report, please let me know. But otherwise, we are on target for the RV, uh, permit program to launch in January. Um, I've met with directors um, who have, we've been, you know, just kind of finalized our strategies and just made sure that we're ready to go and ready to, to launch this. So if any questions at all, um, about the RV program, please let me know. And I'd also like to reiterate that I have an, um, moving into the new year. Um, if any of you need to contact me or have any questions about what I'm doing or anything like that, please reach out to me. Um, my door is always open. Um, I, I don't, yeah, so I just want to reiterate that to all of you that please contact me if you have any questions at all or any of the directors. Please feel free to reach out to them if you have any questions about, um, the work that they're doing or anything, anything that they're doing at all. Just know that we're, we're always here and we're always here to answer any questions you might have. And if you're unable to get ahold of any of us, um, there's several different routes that you can contact us, but, um, and lastly, um, I don't know, I think I've mentioned this before, but the council member office is ready for use and has been. I, I apologize if I didn't mention this before. It is on the first floor. If you would like a key to use that, there's a computer, a telephone and a printer there um, and seats as well. So you can meet with constituents if you would like. Um, it is on the first floor by the main stairwell. So, uh, if you would like a key, please get ahold of me and I'm happy to provide one to you. So are there any questions? Yes.
Uh, thank you for your report. Um, I did have a constituent question inquiring about an update on the elevator maintenance. Thank that.
So with the elevator, um, we have set a contract, I believe, with Omnia. And so the thing with the elevator is that they are working on it. It has to be, the elevator that's in there right now is a wooden elevator. And so it's custom. It has to be a custom elevator because of the age of it. And, um, so we, they Kone is the group that will be working on it, is working with the group in the Midwest to construct the box of it. Um, there will also be, um, and I'll let, um, Director Sanger speak to it. He's a little more, he's in charge of overseeing the project. Um, another issue that we are going to have is that, um, the hydraulic system has to be buried in the ground. And so that was one issue that they foresee may be problematic for us in the future as we're building this. And so they will gather more intel on that and let us know. But, um, Aberdeen, you know, is not a secret that Aberdeen is built on sawdust and the hydraulic system requires, um, kind of like bedrock. It requires stable ground in order to be buried there because it's a mech- mechanic system that will be, you know, pushing the elevator up and down. We don't have enough room on the roof to build a mechanical room and to change the type of elevator that we have in there. Um, so it's going to be a, because of the age of it and the type of elevator that we have, it is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but I, I think it's something that they can overcome. And I'll defer to, Rick, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
Well, I can add that the, what you said about cylinder, it's a single bottom cylinder instead of a double bottom cylinder. So it's, it, uh, was built a long time ago and it doesn't have the safety, uh, ish, the safety so that if there's a release that it doesn't drop into the mud. Um, so, and when we brought this forward, there's, they are on schedule. I know it seems like a long time, but when we brought this forward, remember we said that they're, the, the parts were a year in lead time. So it's not something that they're just gonna throw together in a, in a month or two. And we didn't have a design. So you have to have a design before you can even order the elevator. So we are on schedule. I know it seems like a long time, but we're on schedule.
Oh, um.
Thank you.
I just, uh, so they're gonna check for the gravel and all that below before they build the thing, I hope.
Nice.
Um, okay, thanks. Any other directors would like to make a report? Yes?
Yes, I would just like to thank Victoria for her service to our community from the Aberdeen Timberland Library. She is, uh, moving on. And, um, this will be the last time that we see her at one of our council meetings. So we really appreciate you. Thank you so much, Victoria. It's been so much fun. I love you all.
Director Byrne, you're up.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify the motion by, um, Councilwoman Seedorf regarding the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee grants. You had said you were sending it back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee?
That's correct.
What for?
Specifically to reconsider funding for some of the, um, applicants who were not awarded funding such as the Seaport, the, was it the Art Walk and the Foundation? And then also to reconsider funding for Harbor Air Guild projects as similarly issued, um, issues that came up last year.
Okay. The council will have to send it back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The finance committee can't do that.
From Director Clemens or City Administrator Clemens that we could do that, but.
Well, the council, the council needs to take official action on the record to send it back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And then it needs to include in the minutes, the reason why it's going back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And then they will meet to, um, review based on the request from the city council within forty-five days.
All right. Just I'll need to make a new motion to amend, reinvent the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other directors? All right, um,
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to add back the, um, request for the Lodging Tax Advisor Committee, um, the council approving the recommendation to grant awards. Uh, add that back to the night's agenda?
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion?
As Director Barnum just pointed out, it's up to the council to move to re, to send this back to the LTAC Committee for further consideration. And I'd like to ask the council to do so, please.
Who wants to second? Thank you.
Second, did you say?
I did.
Yes.
I just.
Oh, we need action.
All in favor?
So, so we have a first and a second, so is there any more discussion? Do you have that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, Mr. Mayor, for finance tonight, we have a request from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee that the city council approve the recommended grant awards to the 10 applicants, totaling $105,000, and authorize the mayor to sign grant agreements with each organization. I guess I'll start by moving that the council accept this request and then we can take it from there, I guess.
Second, is there any discussion? Councilperson, what's?
I would move to amend this report to send it back to LTAC Committee for consideration of removing Harbor Art Guild's award and making that award zero for Ghost and for Rain Glow, as well as reconsidering beyond Grace Harbor and historical Seaport due to their lack of attendance at the last meeting, give them another opportunity to show up and present their applications in person.
Second.
Is there any discussion now? All in favor? Oh, what, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I guess I'll just add real quick that, that LTAC Committee was very enthused and impressed and positive about all of the applications and really wanted to approve all of them. The committee, however, like they did last year, kind of took a position that, you know, was recommended strongly as Director Barnum indicated, she made it aware to all applicants that they should have a representative attend the LTAC Committee meeting when we consider these grant requests so that if there are any questions, they can at least answer questions. But to make a brief pitch for their program, it's been also suggested that maybe if the council wants to consider this, we should either make it actually a requirement that someone must be there or, I guess, indicate that it's not necessary for someone to be there. But regardless, I think that there are reasons for LTAC to reconsider some of the requests and I think we should go ahead and send it back.
Second.
Wanted to comment back to Stan. Like I said in the letter that I sent to the council today, I absolutely agree with LTAC's decision as far as wanting applicants to show up in person to make their pitch. I, they absolutely should. In this case, if that wasn't clear to the applicants, I think that they should be given one more chance. But from here on out, I don't know if that's a council policy that we need to work on and have something, you know, put forth on the record that they do need to show up and do their pitch in person, but that's something I definitely see that, think that the council should address.
And Councilperson Pericini?
In, in this case, I do believe that it wasn't, they had other obligations. So there weren't people to show up. And what do you do in cases like that when you have to get called into work or you've already had another meeting scheduled? And I, I don't think that it should be set in stone. I think we should take it on circumstances. That's just my opinion.
Councilperson Kayakon?
What are the better states why they're not there and that we're going to do that?
Yeah.
It's on. It's about, I'm not there. Oh. Maybe we can have sort of a letter attached with the application that states why they're doing it.
The letter of interest.
Letter of interest. And then if somebody can't be present, then there'd be a letter for each with the application.
Yeah.
Director Clemens?
So I provided the LTAC with a matrix to grade each, to consistently grade across the board each application that they were, they received. And so my hope is that in the future, they adhere to that, they could, they should include what, maybe a question on the matrix that says, was the party present to deliver a presentation? So maybe they can get docked points for that to avoid just this like, oh, they didn't show up, I don't want to award them, just so that the grading is consistent across the board and in alignment with the intention of LTAC funds and what their like purpose is. So I, that's, so hopefully maybe next year we'll be able to be a little more consistent that way.
Okay. And Councilperson Seedor?
I, I understand Councilmember Pericini's concerns in the issue. I also understand and agree to some degree with Councilmember Orison on this. I think it is important that the applicants have a representative present. However, I also think there are opportunities that if someone cannot make the meeting, because you never know, you know, the meeting was scheduled on this date, what if you did have conflicts? That we give them an option where they can just like send an email and say, hey, we really like to be there, we can't make it, we really appreciate LTAC Committees, you know, looking at this favorably and considering us and in particular for these reasons approving it, blah, blah, whatever. And they could do that, too.
That's what I think. But that's, that's what I did.
You're on.
You're on. Yeah, speak. That is what I pictured as well. Okay, so we're still, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, so now we're going to Public Safety with Chairperson Osmondson.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be delivering the Public Safety Report tonight. We don't have any agenda items, but I did want to just run through a couple stats here from the Aberdeen Police Department. We did this a couple weeks ago and the chief was nice enough to bring some more stats. So this is a call types over the last couple of years. I'll just give you the calls for this last year and the percent difference from the year previous. So for trespass, 2,848 calls, that's up 13%. Drug possession arrests, 144, that's up 311%. Traffic stops, 5,277, up 34%. Overdose response, 201, down 7%. Traffic accidents, 570, down 3%. And shoplifts, 510, down 21%. Also, shop with a cop was held this past Saturday. Aberdeen police officers, explorers, and volunteers were able to spend time with eight Aberdeen youth along with representatives, representatives from all law enforcement agencies in Grace Harbor. The kids were treated to an outstanding breakfast catered by the Aberdeen High School culinary class. The kids were given rides to Walmart in our police cars with lights and sirens to get Christmas presents for family members and themselves. And a personnel item from the Aberdeen Police Department, they have the new officer, Officer Nick Rule, he was sworn in this afternoon. Officer Rule is a US Navy veteran and will attend the Southwest Washington CJTC Basic Law Enforcement Academy starting December 16th. He will graduate in the spring. And then some call statistics for the Aberdeen Fire Department, they've, they've had 5,759 calls this year. That's up 1% or for a total of 55 calls. And then they've got some holiday safety tips here. I'll just run through these real quick. Half of the home decoration fires in December are started by candles. More than a third of home decoration fires are started by candles. Christmas is the peak day for candle fires. Keep candles at least 12 inches away from anything that burns. A dry Christmas tree can burn very hot and very fast. More than one in every five Christmas tree fires were caused by a heat source too close to the tree. Read manufacturer's instructions for the number of light strands to connect. Make sure your tree is at least three feet away from heat sources like fireplaces, radiators, space heaters, candles, or heat vents. Also, make sure your tree does not block exits. And get rid of your tree after Christmas or when it's dry. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And so Public Works, their person, look.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, we have a public hearing. Bill 24 dash 14, an ordinance repealing ordinance 6191 and Aberdeen Municipal Code 13.56.515 relating to fluoride. I move that we open this public hearing.
Second. Is there any discussion? Do you have that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Just want to pose that we're in a public hearing just now. Open, anybody that would like to come up and comment on the fluoride, it's welcome to do that.
Les Bolton, word four. I listened to the presentation earlier and I watched a whole bunch of headlines go across the screen. And I, you know, I can appreciate that, wow, those are really serious-looking headlines. And I, I mean, you see them on the National Enquirer all the time. I don't know. It, when I, when I was in high school, I took science class, I took chemistry. In college, I took science and chemistry classes. And this is over my head. It is. But I know for certain that we found out about fluoride in 1901 in Colorado Springs because all the people in Colorado Springs had brown teeth and they didn't have tooth decay. And they tried to figure out what the heck's going on. And it was called Colorado Brown Stain. So they, they kept looking into it and what they found was that it was caused, in 1931, they found that it was caused by dental fluorosis. So they started studying that. And they found in 1936, they found that there were an additional 21 cities in the US that had fluoride levels that were way over the top. Now, you know, they tried to figure, they didn't know that, initially, they didn't recognize it was fluoride. They thought it was, one of the cities that was concerned thought it was aluminum. And Alcoa Aluminum did the study and found out that it was fluoride. There's been a lot of studies about fluoride over the years. And I get we saw a bunch of facts blown up on the screen there, but an onslaught of a bunch of headlines, I mean, they've been studying this since 1901. If there was a significant, oh my God, you'd see it. Holgate Palmolive would not be putting it in toothpaste. You know, the American Medical Association, the American Dental Association, that's a, that's a half a million people who are much smarter than I am, who study biochemistry. And they recommend fluoride at 0.7 parts per million, which is what we have. I'm done, but, yeah.
Is there any other public comments? I move, we close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed.
Moving on to reports. Request from Public Works recommending the city council authorize the Public Works Director to execute professional services agreement with Transportation Solutions, Inc. I move that we adopt this report.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Moving on, request from Public Works recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute the supplemental agreement with RH2 Engineering, Inc. I move that we adopt this request.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
Request from Public Works recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute Work Order 10 with MFA Inc. to provide construction support for the Frank Great Rest Brace Project. I move that we adopt this request.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie's?
And request from Public Works recommending city council authorize the credit or issuance of a check of $6,546.97 for the full value of the sewer treatment cost of the water that was not treated at the WWTP from the leak at Reddavie. I move that we adopt this request.
Second. Is there any discussion on this? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
That's all from Public Works. Oh, wait. I've got an ordinance down here. Second reading of Bill 24 dash 14, an ordinance revealing ordinance 6191, Aberdeen Municipal Code 13.56.515 relating to fluoride. I move that we adopt this second reading.
Second. Moved into second, is there any discussion? And Councilperson Seedor?
You know, when this was first brought up and all the prior discussions and the first reading of this, I voted against this proposed ordinance. And, you know, we've heard a lot of input and Dr. Osmondson also, yeah, provided a lot of fancy studies and graphs and things, but like Mr. Bolton had said, this is beyond me, I have no idea. I do know that the citizens of my ward, the majority of them said they don't want fluoride removed. Wasn't a strong majority, it was somewhat over 50 some percent or so, maybe 60%, but it wasn't, you know, 90%. And I have, I have really sincerely no clear idea on, on whether it's a good thing or a bad thing or not. So I'm going to be abstaining from voting on this issue.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, but.
Sorry. Go ahead.
First to Alex.
Councilmember Seedor, you know that by abstaining, it's logged as a affirmative. So you may want to be a little bit more.
Well, then I'll probably vote to, to say yes.
And, and I would, I know that we had a lot of material on this, but I haven't heard one local dentist say, take this out. I haven't heard our local public health folks say, we don't need it, there are other options for poor kids to access fluoride. We know that we have a real dark shortage of dentists and just getting a dental appointment is tough for kids. If this passes, I, I just hope and pray that our county health department will find some way to get fluoride toothpaste distributed through maybe the schools or other programs. Because it, it is very critical as part of the health of our youngsters.
Councilperson Osmondson?
I, I feel confident that there are, you know, various ways of getting fluoride. So for those who are fearful of having fluoride in their water or fearful that it's causing problems, you know, with, with IQ or learning disabilities, they can avoid it and there are other ways of getting it. So I feel confident that no one will go without fluoride. And I would love to see the health department do a program in the schools where they hand out toothpaste, but I think that most children have access to toothpaste, hopefully. If not, then that would be a wonderful thing to see the health department be, you know, participate in.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can we have a voice? And I'm going to abstain.
Ellis?
No.
Francie?
Yes.
Kayakon?
Yes.
Skins?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchinis?
Yes.
Credo?
No.
Seedorf?
Abstain.
War?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Three with one obstruction.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to um suspend the rules, consider the second reading, the third, and place Bill twenty-four dash fourteen and to a vote for final passage.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, uh, councilperson Ellis.
Um, I'm just curious that once this passes, is, does the ordinance say when it would take effect? And since we're so close to the end of the year, could we have it not take effect? Before the start of the new year? And at least that way that we'll have some consistent data at starting January. Processes changed.
Yes, there is a period when the AMC needs to be codified and published. So there will be that period and once that happens, we will, we will be able to officially remove. Fluoride.
So that's probably not gonna happen this year yet.
I don't know the length of time that it takes to codify something and we we work with the publishing company to get them published.
Okay, councilperson Seedorf.
I'm gonna vote yes, because let's get this thing behind us. We already know it's gonna pass.
Councilperson Lawrence.
Uh, Dr. Director Sanger, would you like to say something on this?
Yeah, um, the Department of Health is now reaching out again. They're questioning our our outreach program. They're questioning a number of things. We we had a very good communication plan. We've had flyers, we had mailers, uh, been on the radio. Uh, I I feel we've. It's, we've really um gone above and beyond, but today, when I talk to him, he wants uh copies of everything that we've sent. Uh, it was a little late, um, but one thing I did reassure him is that we, this was the second reading and that we had another reading. So if we forego the rules and don't have a third reading, then we're in, you know. It's not violation, but we're in direct conflict of what I told him earlier today.
Councilperson Seedorf. Oh, well, I have a question. Does the health department have control over what the city actions are?
What the health department has is uh the law on their side. So in March, when we came back, we came forward with this original idea. We had a, we had to do an outreach order and that started with the health department's presentation. That was so horrible and took an hour. Um, and and that turned everybody off right, right there. Um, but we also had to do a number of other presentations and 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 outreaches. And it's in the law that says we have to, before we can consider a vote. We have to have a ninety-day waiting period to determine um and have an outreach program. And we've done that, but um again, now there, the the call I got today was. Uh, did you notify the Department of Health? I'm like, yeah, straight I did. And here's the email to prove it back in March, you know, so uh they're, now they're grasping back at uh at the. So I'm just. Just wanted to tell you what the conversation was today.
It's, I kind of, yeah, I I have full faith in our staff, that you guys have done everything to the T, by the book. Everything that Department of Health has demanded and I think it's probably never gonna be enough. So um my motion stands and I'd like to call the question, please.
Ellis?
No.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaykin?
Yes.
Hodgkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchinis?
Yes.
Credo?
No.
Seedorf?
Yes.
War?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
That passes eight to three, Mister Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, two, one.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll move on to the special committee items with council presidents.
Okay, we have a request from the Museum Collections Committee recommending that the city council approve the deaccession of the eighty-eight listed items. And accession of the sewing machine table from the Laura Law House. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes.
Um, we have an amendment to the Arts Commission for Mister John Cooper and I move we accept this report. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? I'm opposed. Is on your commission. Alright, so now we're back to public comments. If anybody'd like to make a public comment, keep it to three minutes, please. And start with your name and address or ward number. Then. Alright, so then we have anything for the good of the order? Council presidents.
I would like to make a motion to cancel the December twenty-sixth meeting. I think we've accomplished a lot this year. Let's take a, take a week off.
Second. All in favor or excuse me, is there any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? No. Alright, so then that, um, Joshua and Francie.
Okay, I have a, then remember, I've been up in our watershed over the years. I did one on Sunday at Kofsky's Lasker Park and I'm into four bags of garbage. Um, but there's something that's. I need to bring forward. Um. When there is a. Vegetation that allows someone to be hidden from public view, there is usually a concentration of litter just thrown in the ground. Like specifically the mouth of Alder Creek, uh, behind the building seven eleven and across from Solaskew Park. Um, so I'm hoping that we can figure out some sort of program to build that vegetation. Like, not necessarily trees with very low brush, but like blackberries. Something like that that prevents. Um, you know, uh, places have a public.
Would that be on Rick, Director Sam?
I couldn't understand what he's saying. What are you, what are you asking, Joshua?
Well, there's often in watershed that um people hide. And or like do drugs and leave litter and there's a few spots. Tell that every time there's somebody, there's litter right in that spot. Um, so I'm just hoping that. Figure out some sort of way to get rid of that vegetation, whether it be like volunteer programs or.
Well, I think it'd be a case by case basis because I, all these spots, I don't think the city probably owns. So if the city owns the property, it's really easy for us to go in and clean it up. Um, it's just added maintenance, you know, um, but. Um, we can look at the spots you're talking about and see if we own and and if we don't own, we can get. Um, we can partner with the people that own. We've done that out at the, at at like the entrance of the bluff. There's a big portion of that ground that we don't own and we work with the property owners to keep it loaded even though we don't own it. So, um, yeah, if you wanna get together this week, we can talk about spots you're talking about.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Councilmember Francie, um, is it possible that the Conservation District might be willing to help us out too?
I I think. I can't speak to that, but I would assume.
I think it would be worth checking out and 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 I agree with you, um, the city has done, not down the watershed, but like at parks. As you know, because you're over cleaning up the compass roads a lot and I'm sure you remember when that was really overgrown and everything. It was a mess and a disaster to keep up. The city went in there and trimmed everything way, way, way down and it's been a lot better than it was.
Yeah, but since the boat launch, the the thing that was there that was kind of helping people to get under since that's been gone.
Yeah, a big difference, so.
Okay.
And and there is other spots, maybe.
Councilperson Ellis.
I just wanted to wish all of my council colleagues happy holidays and um be safe. And see you in the new year.
Any others? Yeah, good.
Two minutes.
Second. I move we get councilmember Gaykin a new microphone this time.
Mine usually works. I feel like I was handed, that I was giving the one, the oddball one at this time. I would just like to remind councilmembers that when we have public speakers, that is, it is an absolute, absolute respect. Have your cell phone out while they're speaking. And then we've had multiple people that were speaking that was. Asked to be here by the person who's using their phone and say, it has that, that not much more twist of the dagger that we've literally sat here doing this. Multiple people that you've requested to come here and for you to be there on your phone while you're speaking with, I'm just livid.
If I could respond to that, councilmember Gaykin. Um, I received an email from the Department of Health today about um the incidences of fluorosis. And so like I might look at my notepad because I've got notes there. I was looking for that email so that I could um reference that in my questions of the speaker. I did not intend any disrespect. I wasn't doing anything that was not associated with. Where our work is here tonight. I hope you understand that.
I would just, when they're speaking. I'll do that. Uh, it just, I I can't respond, I'm sorry, yes.
No, I think that, I think that was a good comment. It's just, um, it says being respectful to other councilmembers and to the speaker to not have your phone out. My phone's sitting here, but that's because I want to rush to shut it off if you can.
That's done.
But you're right. That, is there any other comment?
Rather than.
This is good, this is good of the order.
But we're out of time, so we made a motion to adjourn or a motion to extend.
Motion to adjourn would be nice. I move we extend for five minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
I just, I just have a quick little thought and I'll try and make it fast. Um, I was for the good of the order, um, I was part of people who was concerned about the needle exchange, you know, program. Um, because the things that I saw within our community of people having abscesses and people that I knew that had died of brain infections. Because they were using the needles in their neck. I went to the health department a number of times with my daughter, expressing my concern because I had students that were able to get access. You know, drivers have students who are able to get access to um all the paraphernalia that they needed to be um involved in the drug scene. And they're very devoted to that despite the fact that hepatitis is on the rise and sexually transmitted diseases. And AIDS and all other things. Um, so we're always gonna have a disagreement, maybe on health issues. When it comes to fluoride, when it comes to the needle exchange, when it comes to these things, we're, you know, we're, some of us are gonna be concerned. That it's actually killing people or hurting people and others will be convinced that it's hard prevention. I don't know, you know, what to do about that other than to say that we're trying to make the best decisions that we can for our community. And um I am convinced that people will have access to fluoride. I'm I'm not, I I'm not worried about that. But for those who are concerned, it won't be in your water anymore and I feel good about that. Um, needle exchange is an ongoing, it's an ongoing thing. I for one am not in favor, but other people are, so that's for the good of the order.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? All, thank you.